Good evening. And welcome. People want to move on. All right. Come on down. Uh, we're all home, Mrs. Slomper.
Dr. Portolino here. Mr. Daughtry.
Here.
Mrs. Vannell here. Dr. O'Driscoll.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Rappaport.
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Graff.
Here.
Mr. Arena.
Here.
Mr. Guadamel.
I'm a resident of the United States of America. We are a republic where justice, honor, and God are its own, its own, its own.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice up and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act of the Monmouth Township Board of Education, provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Monmouth Township Municipal Building, all Monmouth Public Schools, the Monmouth Public Library, the Monmouth Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the District Website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the Board's Official Newspaper, on January 10, 2020.
Thank you very much. Uh, high school events. You guys choose who will go first.
Okay, so for past news to start off, the eighth grade orientation night was held on February 5th, and it was a great night for current eighth graders and their parents. Students and parents were shown what Monmouth offered in both academics and extracurriculars. Uh, the Spanish Arts Society had a Valentine's Day flower sale all last week. Students could send a yellow or red rose to someone else in the first group, receive the rose, receive the rose on Valentine's Day in their homeroom. And six Monmouth students were the National American Scholarship finalists, registered to Christine Sun, Mira Sapostikoff, Shrikar Guadamel, Jane Leighton, Haley Quinn, and Kiaran. For past athletics, girls across Cats Olivia Scheiner presented Monmouth Township High School at the National Girls and Women in Sports Day at St. Paul University on February 9th. This week's Mustang in the Week is senior wrestler Mark Conrad, my best record of 34 alone has won the Morse Knolls, Winaki Valley, Sam Calley, and Morris County tournaments, my books to extended streets, and districts this upcoming weekend. Recently, the wrestling team made history when not only the North won Group Three Championship, but also in the Group Three State Title. Wins in the final were captured by Eric Curzer, Carl Honko, Jamie Salzner, Brent Theresa, No Fox, Mark Conrad, and Mike Murphy. The Mustangs end the season with a 19-2 record and are looking forward to districts this weekend.
All right. The hockey team is currently sitting at a record of 12-8-3. After losing the tough one on Sunday, the team is looking ahead to the Haverston Cup Playoffs, where they will play in the semifinal Wednesday. The team also qualified for the state tournament and got the full C. The boys' basketball team won against Pacifica last night, improving their overall record to 11-9. After a heartbreaking loss to Mountain Lakes in the second round of the Morris County Tournament, the team is looking ahead to the first round of states against Northern Highlands on March 2nd. The team will host the senior night next Tuesday against Mount Mallard, the Black CJ. The winter track and field team competed very well at the sectional meet. Five Mustangs placed at the meet. Mikael Roth and Buehler placed sixth in the high jump. Fima De Zero placed fifth in the 400 meters. Anjali Patel placed fourth in the high jump. Nick Arrowsa placed third in the 55 meter hurdles. And Ken Simabuku won the sectional title in 55 meters. These athletes will represent Monmouth at the group championships. The girls' basketball team celebrated their senior night with a 48-33 victory over men, led by 18 points from Bellevito and 15 from M O X. The team is 20-0 and is ranked number 11 in NJ.com's rankings. On Saturday, they beat Morris Town in the quarterfinal round of the Morris County Tournament. Their next game is tomorrow against Morris Town again. Now moving on to future events. Uh, the stage is set for one of the school's most highly anticipated events. Key Club's annual event volleyball marathon will take place this Friday, February 21st. The event will run from 6 to 11. Um, students who qualify for the state competition for Daco will compete in the land city from March 2nd to March 4th. And that concludes tonight's report.
Thank you very much. Uh, we do have a little problem on one of the representatives here. We just put a new gym over in the high school, and last night, one of the basketball players was trying to demolish it by diving into the bleachers. So CJ, uh, please take it easy on that. We need those bleachers for a while. How you feeling? A little sore after that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and also, I ask CJ, does he know what the number 100 is?
I don't know.
Well, I'll give you him. What's 80? What's 80 also? 100 and 80. What's 100 plus 80?
180?
Very good, very good. Today was your 100th day of school this year.
You know what, Mr. Graff? I was actually looking at turn access to track my offices, and I actually saw it. It was 100 out of 100.
Yeah. Do you believe that, I don't know? Good luck to the next guy, Pedro CJ. Good luck to the state attorney.
Thank you.
Thank both of you for your report. Do we have any comments?
Well, in that, I was there for the eighth grade orientation, and now kudos to everybody who did it. It was a first-class job. I think the high school really puts best foot forward. Um, yeah, a lot of kids from the high school have a lot of clubs represented. So kids from Lazard could very easily see that it's a place where you want to go, and that if you want to accomplish something, there's something there for you. All you have to do is find it. It's a very good presentation.
Thank you, and I think a lot has to do with the senior class and the paper students we have there this year, and we thank you for that. I'm not going to answer this question next time, because when I know the answer, I'll have a different question. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Feel free to leave or stay, whatever you like to do. Superintendent's report, Dr. Rook, turn.
Okay. I just wanted to note that last week, we did have a presentation. We are grateful to DAC for allowing us to present information on baking. It was a full-day event, with presentations to high school students as well as middle school students, and then an evening program for the parents. I think everyone who witnessed it would agree that there was a lot of very important information, a lot of eye-opening information that was presented. Um, I think we did have a good termality and program for the parents. Um, just good information. I wish we could have a few more folks there, but we're very grateful to DAC for providing us the opportunity to share that information. Um, this evening, we are honored to, again, to have Charlene, who is happy to be with us. And I'm going to turn things over to Charlene for her presentation on the Board's role in budgeting.
Well, I feel honored to be here tonight, because this is, you know, the Board has been working hard for its earning its board certification. And tonight is the last, training is the last credits that the Board is going to earn to achieve that. Um, you have 15 and a half out of the 16 credits that are required over our four-year period. The Board also completed a board self-evaluation, had a policy wellness check done, and also had the Jersey School Boards look at one of your bargaining agreements. So those are all of the requirements needed for certification. Um, so that is it. And the Board will be honored at the May 14, Morris County School Board Association meeting that we had with the mansion, right, in Mountain Lakes there, or 46. Um, and was mentioning to some people that were here a little bit earlier, that maybe as a group, you might want to strive then now that once you've got this certification accomplished, that there's one more for boards to earn, and that's the Carol E. Larson Master Board Award. Um, and that requires 10 more hours of training, 10 more credits, over a two-year period. Um, it is a certification that we have had now for probably, I don't know, kind of 15 years, and of the 500 and 80 school districts. I'm going to say there's only 30 boards in the state that have earned this accomplishment. So, you know, it's something that your board might want to consider then as, you know, a goal to continue working toward. So having said that, tonight, just wanted to do, and we're getting, for many of the district, we've already been having a divided season. For the Board, this is just kind of on our radar now. Um, so just wanted to do a quick little communication with this group, kind of what the Board's role is in this process. So from the Board's perspective, we kind of have a unique responsibility in that we're accountable to the students, and we're accountable to the community. How can we give our students the best education that our community may be informed? And from the Board's standpoint, we're saying it's not our job basically to balance the books, but it's our job to make sure that they do that. So we're kind of responsible, again, always for that high level, um, financial integrity of the district. So, you know, the state's expectation of us is that we have to make sure that our students are receiving a thorough and efficient education, that then we have other, our own expectations of our community and our district on top of that, of making sure then that we're carrying out the vision and the expectations of our district, again, at a price that the community can afford. And it's just that constant balancing that's different for every district and for every community. So it's up to you as a Board to represent what does that look like for your community, and make sure, again, usually that we can affect that. So as we talk about our budget, you know, we sometimes think about our budget as being just dollars and cents on a piece of paper, but really, we need to think about our budget as something greater than that. It's really taking our vision, it's taking our goals, it's taking what our expectations are for our students, and taking that and translating that into dollars and cents. That's how we're representing what we want to do for our students. So it's not really just those, a bunch of numbers that you're looking at. It's taking everything you want to accomplish and everything you want to do for your students, and portraying in a way that is in dollars. So as we look at the budget, as I said, it basically serves, you know, several purposes for us as a Board. It's a planning document, so again, it's taking that vision, it's looking into the future, it's looking at how are we going to make these, you know, your Board, your district has a strategic plan. As we look forward, as to what things need to be accomplished and carried out, the budget is one of those ways that we're planning to do that. Um, it helps us get a financial roadmap, provides that check of balances, and then there's accountable. Are we accomplishing our goals, and are we doing it, you know, in a way, again, that's an investment to start taxes? So if someone takes a look at your budget, they should be able to get an understanding of your district and the direction your list of this heading, just based on the things that are in your budget. So what's the Board's role in the process? You're responsible for setting the priorities. When we set those roles, when we look at that strategic plan, what is it that needs to be funded? What are our student achievement expectations? Again, looking at how the community can afford, and how are we supporting our district mission and our district vision? Um, we have a budget calendar. I've put a sample of the welcome escape on the table there for you. So again, we need to make sure that we are, you know, holding ourselves accountable to meeting the deadlines that the state has set for us. Um, it's important, you know, the state said that it's important that your budget be a transparent process to the community. So we need to make sure then that our community has the information it needs to understand what's in the budget, um, and then, again, to continue to practice that oversight. So then let's take a step back and say, okay, what's not our role? So we don't develop the budget. We don't look to determine what are the line items, what needs to be addressed, but we also don't look at things from, you know, the level of a classroom, of one school, or one sport or something. We are looking at it more from a district by another. Are we meeting our strategic goals? Are we meeting our district goals? Are we planning for the new initiatives that we want for the student achievement? So as we kind of look at it as a flow process, you know, we recognize that the staff of the administration has been involved in this for several months now, of getting input on what the budget needs to look like, what needs to be included in there. Um, and as a Board, we kind of set those parameters of making, of kind of identifying what is it that the community can afford? Is it important for us to go to the 2% cap? Does it need to be something different than that? Do we need to exceed it based on what the needs are? So we're kind of helping set those parameters, but for the most part, we have to work developing budgets set by the administration. We have to technically approve it. Again, the stakeholders accountable. Is, will your students receive at least a thorough and efficient education based on what's in the budget? I mean, I know that there was a district who put forth or said they wanted a 0% increase, put the budget in that way, and the state sent it back and said, if you don't have anything in here, then you need, or that your students need for a thorough and efficient education. Board, that's your responsibility to make sure that that happens, and that your students are portrayed. Um, becoming superintendent then has to be another set of eyes to look at your budget. The community, as I said, it's important that, you know, that they're aware of what we're doing. Even though they no longer have to vote on a budget, that doesn't diminish our responsibility for making sure that the community knows what's in it, knows how their money is being spent, knows what the new, any new initiatives and things are. Um, and then for the Board, when we, when we have not the budget, we should consider any community input that we receive, um, and adoption processes required as a local voting. So I just put on, I mean, just like I said, this budget calendar that the state put out is just there just kind of for information only. Um, and also, you know, we, we had that public hearing, and also thought it would be helpful to know that the state in its calendar provides us an initial lead if we need time after we've got that public hearing, as a Board to consider any input from the public, that we do have seven days till cemetery needed, but recognize that you can't make major changes that have not been discussed in front of the public. So here, I'm going to go through a quick knowledge check. And so this is just going to be kind of a quick high-level overview. So if we look at the Board's role during the budget process, and we have to pick all the parts, do we think the Board sets priorities? Yes, right? Do we think the Board has to provide by budget calendar?
Yes.
Does the Board schedule the budget? Nope, who does that? Do we are, do we pay it to the community? Yep. And ensure that the final budget supports student achievement standards? Yeah, yes, you're correct. Okay. How, as we look through the budget, we should be asking questions, but sometimes we have to make sure that the questions we're asking are questions that are appropriate on a level of where a Board should be involved. So as before, I mentioned, you know, kind of looking at it from that high-level perspective. So again, let's try some of these. Is this question yes or no within the Board's role? What are the program and dollar impacts of implementing the state's standards? Obviously, that's not a yes, right? Yeah, that would be in the Board's role. How about, is my daughter a seventh-grade class getting new technology? Okay, so again, you said they're not getting drilled down to that one specific level or specific grade. How about, how much are we spending for paper next year? Again, a little too far, we're looking at things more on a higher level. How about, our enrollment has increased by 75 students. Why do we need six new teachers? That's a district-level question, right? As a Board, you might want to ask. And how about, why are we buying new security cameras for only one school? That's kind of on the Board. I mean, I said no only because it was one school, but I mean, I can understand why it might be a question that you might want to ask. So as we look then at the budget, so we just kind of talked about the whole overview of the budget, but just wanted to break it down into a couple pieces of the revenue then, and the expenses are just really at a high level, upsetting, you know, for, for you know, the primary revenue source for most districts is property tax and state aid. I'm not going to go into the state aid piece of it, we're just going to look at property taxes a little bit, again, recognizing that there are other revenue sources. Um, so for the property tax, and we know that in 2010, the state passed a permanent cap, that said that we can't raise the public tax level, you know, 2%, I don't know what it was the previous year. Again, recognizing that you have the ability, if you don't use all the capital, you don't use, you know, all of the waivers, and you can bank it up to three years to be used in subsequent years if needed. Um, so a question, and I know I even have been asked this in my own time, you know, I'm on the Board for a while, but people know that I used to be, is, okay, well, if we have a 2% cap, how is it that, if I do the math, that our budget, you know, that our tax level is going up over 2%, how does that happen? And the reason is because what the state basically said is that there are allowable waivers. So it is the 2% plus the allowable waivers. And your district may be entitled to some waivers if you've had involvement increases, certain healthcare costs increases, you use some of your bank cap, and any deferred pension costs. So those are things that are calculated into the budget. Some of them really need to apply for, they're just calculated into the budget software. Um, so those are things that are, like I said, waivers that can cause your, the 2% number to be applied. Another option would be if you find yourself in a situation where you need to raise some additional funds above 50%, um, you can have a second question, which appears on your ballot, goes on the regular November ballot. Or you can do that, you do need approval from the county superintendent. Importantly, it can't be for programs or services needed for a thorough and efficient education, because if it's going down by the community, you know, then you're not able to provide those services. So it has to be for something outside of thorough and efficient, you know, for a thorough and efficient education. And there was even a question on the state that they, well, what, you know, we wanted to do sports programs or other things like that, and they said, no, we consider those to be part of a thorough and efficient education. So it has to be something, I'd say, for security things, you know, other things. Um, and then you also have to state on there, is it something that's going to be a reoccurring cost? Is it just the one kind of thing that I messaged you for money for? Or if I'm adding a position, say, like, say, if I am adding a security position, that person needs to be paid every year? So it's a reoccurring, you know, recurring cost? So you also need to make sure that you are telling the taxpayers that as well. So separately from our income, if we look at our expenditures, as much as we, you know, think about the work that goes into a budget, and all of the new things that we think we like to do, the initiatives that we have to fund, there's really just a small pool that's left over to consider those things from. If we went through, you know, typically salary benefits is about 80% of your budget, then if we look at the other things that we have to do, the programs, the testing, the insurance, busing, all the mandated things, um, that's probably about another 15%. And so in most districts, we're only left with kind of that little piece of the pie that's about 5%, where you need to, you know, be able to work with them, to do all of the additional things and the additional work that people like to do, or new things that are coming up, or unexpected mandates. So that's the place that that money is coming from. Um, I just wanted to show you, you know, that part of our budget responsibility is also outlined in the QSEC. It's under the Governance Section, so we consider that to be the Board's responsibility. But they also cross-reference it, that they'll take these same things, and will show you, okay, how we're taking these same things and also putting it in program and instruction, also putting in finance, recurring time, everything, all these areas together. But from the Board's perspective, they've said that it's important that we have policy and receivers for both of the financial planning, again, that our budget is the line to provide for a thorough and efficient education. So as a Board, you're being held accountable to that for the QSEC, and that you have followed the budget process. So the process that the state outlines, that you have to have a public hearing, you have to adopt the budget at a public meeting, you have to provide ongoing information on the budget status, and make the budget available for public notice and inspection. So that's kind of the directive that the state is giving us to make sure that we are being transparent in this process and making this information available to our community. Um, there are a series of resolutions, so again, this is how the Board's role in the process will be, and things that then you are going to be asked to approve at long review. So then making sure that you're informed and have the information you need to approve. So then the last piece of this was, again, the question. Yeah, so just kind of to close out here, just a couple knowledge check questions. The budget translate the district's educational management to dollars, true or false? How about, the budget is not an indicator of the direction of the district, true or false? How about, an appropriate budget question a Board member can ask is, how much is budgeted for new furniture in the middle school media center? Which Board has the most money budgeted, or does the current state level support the added energy? How about, a 2% tax levy cap is a hard cap and is a hard load, is true or false? Okay? And which are Board priorities in the budget process? Strategic and district goals, mission and mission statements, student achievement needs, what the community can afford, for all of the above? Okay, that was it. You guys did it. So you now have earned that final cap power here that you needed, and you have enough, and recognize that you certified the Board's role, the hard work.
Thank you very much, Charlene.
It's my pleasure.
Appreciate it. And hopefully, on May 14th, which is meeting up at the mansions, I know of other years when we've been there, people were getting the award that night. I would encourage as many of us as possible to be there, because I know that some of these other districts in the past, they've had eight out of nine members or something like that. So make what, can you write that down? Uh, if you can make it, it would be great. Any, it's ironic that you're presenting this now, Charlene, because as I mentioned to you, we have scheduled a special meeting to adopt the tenure budget on March 10th, and the exact location yet will be decided. I think town hall might be due that day, that evening. So we are going through this, and the Business Administrator will have the booklets, and I'm sure some questions will come up, and thank you very much. Any questions, Charlene? Any questions, Charlotte?
I do have a question.
Charlie?
I do have a question. All right, on one or two of the slides, there was a statement, which of the questions would be appropriate for a board member to ask, yes, no? And there was one about the media center furniture. And you put that as a no, right? So, my question is, if a board member asks how much the furniture costs, that's inappropriate?
The point was, Frank...
Yeah, that's a yes or no, is that an inappropriate question? It's a yes or no, isn't it?
I understand.
Would I be out of order to ask at the meeting or something, how much the furniture costs?
So, it typically would not be in the board's role to ask a question at the level of a particular area. Would your district consider it to be inappropriate? Perhaps not?
So, I should never ask that question, like, how much something costs, or how much?
I think, I think my, in fairness, it would really depend on the context of the question. So, if, you know, if you thought something was unfair...
You can't determine what I'm thinking, I just want to know how much it costs.
I, I think, one thing too here, Charlotte, we have a very active finance committee. We've been meeting several times, and we'll be meeting twice again next week. If the question came up about the cost of the furniture, there was a new grant of $100,000, the business administrator will have made aware of any highlights in the budget. Always what we ask for, the highlights, the big money increases, and big money decreases, and the cost of the case. Usually, people want to know what's coming, going, what it's going to cost. But I think in that case, if I was here, Mike, and you asked the question, what is the cost of the media center when we redid the high school media center? We told everyone, that project grant was $100,000 and $150,000. We weren't hiding anything. Maybe the question comes, well, how much is the Mac Tech book's going to cost us in a third grade class at Valley View? That's when we're getting into maybe really, which is not...
He's asking specifically that question, it seemed kind of like a hot question.
Yeah, but we have big money issues, we're looking at capital increases, and I hope that your mark in the administration, we have confidence, that they will answer these questions before we even ask them. So, I disagree with you. I think the board member has the right. It's not a big deal, it all depends, each board operates a little different, but...
And I guess it's have a question of right or not having the right, do you have the right to ask anything?
Mm-hmm.
But at some point, there has to be kind of, I guess, a line of, should I be asking about something at this level versus...
Well, we haven't had that problem, and I'm confident that the board here knows when they get the information, I can see that as a problem.
And also, and also, when you have a finance committee, the finance committee does get into...
We have some stupid questions in there.
In much, in much great...
Basically, about Brian.
I have a question.
Thank you, Charlotte. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Charlotte.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm new Charlotte, so excuse me. To Michael's question, if I have a question about something, just because I'm, I know a lot of people in the school district, and I think it's something maybe not needed or too expensive, do I contact Dr. Rohter, the president, if I think it's too expensive? Or do I go to the finance committee and speak to one member of the board? I'm just curious, what would be appropriate?
So, this could be a local district decision of how you would communicate something like that?
Like here, right on the board, like here, as we're a board? So, not an email, okay, of a council?
So, I guess, so...
Initially, I was okay.
Do you pose your question to write change is different for district to district, depending on what your communication protocol and practice is for something?
Initially, if you have a question for clarity, you go to the DA. If you don't think we should be spending X dollars on my program, then that would come to the full board, because one board member doesn't decide whether or not we're going to do this. Okay? We act upon, remember, we act upon recommendation of the administration, especially in programs and things of that nature. The ones we really think about with, it's a lot in capital, because that's, some of us have been around a while, we have got them. But once you get the program, the explanation will be there, and once you get the booklet, and I think a lot of your questions will be answered. If not, you'll be, you'll get the input, you'll answer the question. Thank you again, for the third time, you were brief. You were brief, but you aren't too brilliant, you don't forget.
That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. I also, several of us were at the vaping seminar. I know that Mike was there, I know that Joe was there, I was there, along with some of the administrators, Renee was there, and it was a very eye-opening program, and I would like to again thank the drug awareness for sponsoring this program. And I know the schools took a very well, two programs in the morning for the high school I was in, two in the afternoon for the middle school, and hopefully, if we can just push this message out to these kids, it's really, really scary. Okay, let's go to... Committee reports. Finance, Karen?
So, timely enough, the finance committee did discuss the budget. It was a very early review, and we took a look at the regular programs of the school district going forward, and we're going to be providing some information on that in the form of some vouchers. We also talked about the status of the referendum projects. That work will be done and finished this summer, along with some of the ESIP projects and other ideas. And that really did consume the entirety of the committee meeting.
Thank you. Michael, curriculum meeting, did you meet?
I was himself.
No, no. I was sitting there, no meeting. Communication, Michelle?
We have a meeting scheduled for March 3rd.
March 3rd? Safety? Nothing scheduled, nothing, okay? No air talk? School board is light as on? Karen, don't tell us about the Hope trip to Washington.
Well, that's exactly what I was planning to do, I'm trying to find my mind, it's so good.
So, I did attend the January 31st to February 5th meeting in Washington, it was Washington, DC. It was hosted by New Jer, uh, I'm sorry, National School Boards. They, they put the program on, and I went down with other officers of NJSPA, as well as some staff members, and other board of director meetings. And the conference was really divided into two areas. We spent Saturday in an equity conference, we talked about things like gender neutral facilities and education freedom scholarships. And then the next day and the day after, we were in conference for most of the day, talking about the things that, by consensus, were decided by the NSBA as areas to advocate for on our Day of the Hill, which was Tuesday. So, two days of conference, and then on Tuesday, we went to Capitol Hill, well, we spent some time with our congress folks. They came to us, we were set up in a, in a meeting area, and then we headed over to the Hart Building and saw representatives from Cory Booker's office and Senator Menendez's office. And some of the things we talked about, we have heard a presentation by Jessica Rosenmorsel, she's a commissioner of the FCC, and she expressed concern about a decision that the FCC commissioners made, it was a 3-2 decision, to cap E-rate. And capping E-rate would cause financial hardship for most school districts, as E-rate provides very good discounts. And so, we advocated not to support the cap. We also advocated for more funding for a new program called Stop School Violence. The current budget, or post-budget, has earmarked $100 million in grants. The grants can be used for hardening of the building, as well as socio-emotional learning. And most people felt that $100 million for a country this size was not enough, so we were advocating more grant money. We were also advocating for ways to retain teachers, which is perhaps not an issue here, but is an issue in many parts of the country. We also advocated for full funding of IDEA. Right now, the state of New Jersey gets approximately 14.6% of what we should be getting from the federal government, so we did advocate for that. And there was, throughout the conference, both equity and advocacy, there was a thread of socio-emotional learning, creating a healthy school climate, and everything I heard about and learned about, I always said that about Dr. Rohter. Because here in Lockville, and, and to the administration, we do so much of the things that are being recommended that we do. And so, I just wanted to say thank you to Renee, to the administration, for making that somewhat of a priority for us, the socio-emotional learning component. The idea of having our teachers receive professional development in the trauma-informed classroom, when perhaps other districts are completely unfamiliar with that term, or learning about average childhood experiences. This is very, very important stuff, and when you talk about, you know, the HIB law and bullying, no law is going to prevent bullying. What's going to prevent bullying are families and these kinds of programs. So, just kudos to Renee, to the administration, and to us for supporting her in those areas. So, just one more comment. Next week, I'll be attending the executive committee of New Jersey School Boards down in Trenton. There is a new school board member orientation this coming weekend, which I'll be attending as an officer. There's also a professional development opportunity for the officers that I'll be attending on February 29th. And I didn't want to mention that on February 8th, New Jersey School Boards conducted a leadership conference, Mike and Mike Buckens were there. I attended really just to welcome people to Monmouth Township, and to welcome them to our beautiful media center and high school, and wish them a good conference, and I'm sure that they enjoyed a good conference. And since I have a mic, and even, I know Michael Ryan is the liaison for Mars County School Boards Association, but I would like to reiterate to the board members, if you only go to one meeting ever in your whole tenure as a board member, as a board member, go to the one on the 14th. It is a great honor for us to be receiving this award, and in my experience of attending these meetings over many years, typically, when boards receive these awards, it is a very good compliment, whether it's a full board attending or not, but there are generally many attendees there to accept the award, so it would be a nice opportunity for us to be together on a very nice occasion.
Thank you, Karen. Michael?
I don't, didn't have a retort on the county, but I did want to make an opinion to my colleagues' comments, particularly about the workshop that was held here on the 8th, and that Michael attended. You know, it's one of those things where, you know, you're assigned for something, you have the highest of intentions, and then a Saturday morning rolls around and you say, oh, I gotta be up. I was a moment in that thing, and I have to say, that workshop that they presented was, in my opinion, excellent. The topic was equity, and it was well worth while. And I, I was amazed at the time through, right, and before I knew it, the three, well, almost, the time flew by. There were, there were people from all over the world at the state. I think that's closely, it was a very, I'm sure, you might have seen the book, I don't know. And, and it just, the way he presented, Dr. Green, I believe, is superintendent of Mutant, the time flew by, participation was good, and the value of understanding equity as opposed to equality was really, really valuable. That's my take on it, it was a really great workshop. I am so glad to go see, to go with him.
Hi, for Iowa, it was very good, you really crystallized those ideas.
Good, so thank you. Thank you to our administration and to our, to my colleague, to the region.
Mars County, Ed Scherbergen? Yes, we met on February 12th, and we talked about Project Search. Project Search is for design content, it's 18 to 21 with learning differences. And so, what they're going to be doing is reaching out to global businesses, where they can get the kids involved in the business, so they're going to work full-time as an intern in the business. There will also be a class taught on the business's campus, in a conference room or whatever room that they designate. They'll have a teacher that will be there as well to work with the, the kids, to help these, these kids into the workforce, get them trained, so that they can move on as they expect, whatever they like to do. So, that's in, in progress. It hasn't been implemented yet, they're, they're talking about reaching out to various companies to see which one would be interested in hosting this, this, the Project Search program. They say that this Project Search is, is a national program, and so, other school districts around the country do have implemented, and they have had a little bit of success with it. Also, the Hart Lake School that's in Rockaway, which is currently unused, is, there's a buyer lined up, unfortunately. One issue with it is that the zoning laws, it's actually never zoned for educational use, so assuming that the buyers get permission, and variance from the town, so it's approved, and the money will get returned back to the county. Transportation, one of the issues that came up was that the, the cost of transportation using outside vendors has gotten to a point where it's, it's almost the same price as running a transportation program internally. So, they're looking at changing the transportation contracts, so that there's more self-transportation, where we end up buying buses and tilting all the routes, and there's several hundred bussing routes throughout the county. And last, there was discussions with St. Elizabeth College, St. Elizabeth College, and that they're going to be offering graduate-level classes at Central Park School. And the idea here is that teachers who may need certification or child training, they can get it at a discounted price by attending one of these classes offered by St. Elizabeth professors at the Central Park School. And it could be, at times, it could be for the teachers, and also, it's at a discount, so as, as board members, it would be a, they're trying to look at about a 20% discount off of a normal continuing educational, educational costs. And those discussions are in progress, and hopefully, they'll be ready for the office first, if you'd like. And the next meeting is March 11th?
11th. That's the second one, I think.
Second, I see, yep.
Thank you, Mike. Do you have a mind for the members?
Sure, we met last weekend. I guess some of the things that might be of, you know, some interest to us on the school board is discussions about both project graduation and project promotion. Project promotion will be at Lazar's, as usual. On project graduation, I don't, at this point, I think it's not going to be really formal like we've had in the years past. I think what we're hoping to do is something local, maybe something to keep the kids around, maybe throwing grants, such as ideas like we cookouts or something like that, just afterwards, just to give the kids something to do. You know, last year, we had something at the Firehouse, we didn't really get into littles last second, but I think this year, we'd like to do something a little more structured, but I obviously, it's going to be a go-away trip like it's been using the past. Long signs, we'll be going on sale, DAC sponsoring. And we also talked about the vaping presentation at both Lazar and the high school. I'll just say, this presentation to the parents was fantastic. If any kid saw the presentation, they'd never even look at it again. Some of the things you hear about, the things going into vaping, that they're using pesticides, the tobacco companies selling these products, because they know kids vape in their cars, and you get the smoke on the windows, and you can't get the windows off of the windows, they give you a special product, you see, get the smoke off the windows. I say, boy, if you need that, to get off the windows, what's it doing to your lungs? So, it was just a really, it was a very impressive presentation. There were, I'd say, 60 parents there, which is, and not, less than we would have hoped for, more than there could have been in the years past. So, again, DAC did a great job of putting that together.
Thank you. The athletic boosters, Oron?
They did not need this one, but we'd have it March 4th.
They did not meet this month, but will be done on March fourth.
DTC, Levitham, Cedar Hill?
So January twenty-second, there was a meeting, and I guess two takeaways would be, the MEF awarded Cedar Hills a home and school grant for something that they're calling a book vending machine. And basically, the idea is if a student performs not just any act of kindness, but a special act of kindness, and I'm not, I don't know how it's being defined, but I'm sure they have it well in hand, that child's going to receive a special coin, which they can drop into the book vending machine and receive a book. And their P P tray is January twenty-first of twenty, January twenty-first of twenty-one. So put on your calendars.
Thank you. Hail the Westman. I think the first meeting that turned out on February thirteenth, they were very happy to send me rather than prior representatives they had over there. But they had a very, very comprehensive agenda. One of the things I'm proud of on the agenda site, under the good news, is they received a grant, and they got forty, I'm looking for it, here it is, forty, four hundred ad dollars, they had the money to support the wellness initiative. They got that from Chilton Medical Center. They went through a lot of programs that they have, and it's quite a long way for the next two, three months. And the next meeting will take place on May seventh. They didn't have any questions other board. They just, I thank them nationally for everything that they've done. All right. You, Joe?
Nothing important, Sam.
Mason, Christine?
Thank you. They were a great bunch of parents and principals, wonderful to me and very welcoming. They're very excited to work with the administration on their new landscaping that's coming up, so that'll be this spring. And I think they, if they need to raise funds for something specific, they're looking forward to the meeting, because then they have something to raise funds for. The next meeting will be on Thursday, April second, at nine AM.
Thank you. Winna?
This coming Thursday.
Lazar?
I believe it's March nine. Seems March nine, Monday, March nine.
Okay. And high school, Michelle?
No meetings since our last report. I guess just one thing to be aware of, the musical's coming up, March sixth, fifth, sixth, no, sixth, I think, Adam's family, it's going to be another.
Very exciting, Charlotte.
Yes, Fano's production is out.
Thank you. Sex and age, H, public participation is an opportunity for anyone in the public to like the S then plus non-dependent items, this is your opportunity. Do you have any notable public? Want to speak? We have a consent resolution, we have one that on this, and a dent, J three. May I have a motion? On the agenda list? Move. Question down minutes, aye? J, the two items plus the denim?
Mr. President, if I may read the denim?
Okay, this is J three, the denim, I'm sorry.
Sure. Be it resolved that the HIV determination regarding student number one zero one nine five zero is affirmed following.
Thank you. Any other questions on K? I don't see there's no action on either. N? All right, go, go, please, Michelle.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Murrah?
Yes.
Dr. Portolino, abstaining on the February fourth minutes, and yes, aye, if nothing else. Mr. Daughtry?
Yes, abstaining on, check number nine three three six five.
Ms. Fano? Yes. Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Full session of public participation? Anybody in the public? And if not, on the agenda? Before we adjourn, I would like to really thank all of you guys who have made the special efforts to get to all of our events that have been happening, whether it's morning meeting on Saturday morning at the school boards, whether it's having an athletic event, whether it's a band, whether it's a clap-along. I think you're involved, and the people on, they view that, they know that. And I think it's very important, and thank you, and I encourage you to continue. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Just one comment, I, I, on, gosh, when was it recently? February eighth, last Sunday. One of our students, Michael Veno, had a cord honor, he achieved Eagle Scout, and Charles, Mike, and I attended, and it was, as always, a very nice ceremony. And I don't think I have ever been a scout that has achieved sixty-four merit badges, that blew my mind away. But he did, and congratulations to Michael.
This is what I was speaking about. Not all high members know everything, but the staff of it, it's great to see representation around. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.